All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the public hearing during the lunch hour today for the Medicaid Transformation Project Waiver Renewal. We've got a few more participants kind of floating in here, so we'll get started in just a second. But before we do, I just want to check and make sure that our speakers are with us. I see Michelle and I see Chase. And Michael Arnas, are you with us too?
I am on Rochelle. Good afternoon.
Yay, wonderful. And then B, Ms. B, do you, are you here?
I am. Good, good afternoon.
Hey, B. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Michelle, I will pass the baton to you to kind of kick things off, and then we'll get started.
Great, thank you, Rochelle. Welcome, everyone, to our afternoon discussion on the Medicaid Transformation Project. This is a formal part of the federal requirements for submitting a waiver for Medicaid. And this is to gather your feedback and questions. And then we will revise our draft application before we submit it to Centers for Medicare and Medicaid this summer. So just an opportunity to hear what kind of questions you might have and have a brief overview of the proposal that we have today. Again, thank you for joining us. We appreciate your time and attention, and I'll turn it back to Rochelle to be the master of ceremonies.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Next slide. All right, so some quick housekeeping. Welcome to Zoom for those of you who may be new to this particular virtual platform. We are recording today's webinar. And at this time, we have muted all attendees, which means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you yet. There'll be a time at the end for some Q and A. And we encourage you to submit your questions and comments through the chat function that we have circled here on this slide. And you can do this during any part of the presentation. You don't have to wait until the end of the Q and A. You can do it whenever. And if you wish to verbally share your input, we would encourage that too. And please raise your hand using the raise hand function. And we can call on you during the Q and A. And to find the raise hand function, it's under the reaction section of Zoom. We've also turned on closed captioning for all attendees today. However, you might not see that on your end. So if you want to have closed captioning, please enable the live caption button that's at the bottom of your screen. And you can get to that by clicking on the three dots that says more at the bottom of your screen. And the option is there to click on live caption. Or you can expand your entire, your full screen, and it should be available at the bottom. And you just click on live caption, and those closed captioning remarks will come right up for you. The slide deck is available on our MTP renewal page. And we'll be posting the recording of today's hearing on the same page in about a week. All right, next slide. All right, so we'll present, we'll have a few presenters with us today. You've heard from Michelle Needham, and she is the Chief Policy Officer here at Healthcare Authority or HCA. We have Michael Arnas, who is our Deputy Chief Policy Officer. We'll also hear from B Rector. And she is the Interim Assistant Secretary for Aging and Long-Term Support Administration. That's known as ALTA. And that is within the Department of Social and Health Services or ESHS. And then we'll hear from Chase Napier as well, and he is the Medicaid Transformation Manager here at HCA. And I'll be moderating and kind of open out with a Q and A section at the end. And my name is Rochelle Alangi, and I'm the Policy Communications Manager at HCA. Next slide, please. All right, so quick agenda. We're going to go through a really high-level, brief overview of Medicaid coverage. And also, we'll be talking about the Medicaid Transformation Project or MTP waiver renewal. And we'll be doing a deeper dive into the goals of the renewal. And of course, the programs that will be continuing, expanding, or beginning in the renewal. And then we'll have time at the end for Q and A. Next slide, please. All right, so Michael, I'm going to punt it to you to talk about Medicaid.
Good afternoon, everybody. The Medicaid program is a federal-state partnership with the states administering the program and the federal government paying and setting a majority of the rules. The state also is able to do demonstrations through a waiver process. And we're currently in a waiver that we began in 2017 called the Medicaid Transformation Project. Let's go to the next slide so we can talk about what we came here today to talk about, which is the renewal. And in this renewal, we have set aside three aims that we would like to, a part to guide us in this development. And that's because the current waiver will end at the end of this year. And we will then be able to ask for five more years in a renewal process. So what we'd like to do, and the first aim is ensure equitable access to whole-person care. Empowering people to achieve their optimal health and well-being in the setting of the choice. Build healthier, equitable communities with communities, and pay for integrated health and equitable value-based care. You'll see that the word equity or equitable is found in all three of those aims. Because we believe that with a lot of the progress that we made in the first waiver that will end at the end of this year, we believe that there's more that we can do for all populations that are served in the Medicaid program. So on to the next slide, we talk about the goals. And the reason that we have aims and goals is that the aims were established just as we're starting the project of the renewal. The goals are because we wanted to organize the application that is posted for review right now by themes or goals. And the first one was to expand coverage and access to care, ensuring that people get the care they need. The second is whole-person, primary, preventive, and home and community-based care. And the third is to accelerate care delivery and payment innovation focused on health-related social needs. And let's go into the first goal real quick here. And this one, again, we just covered. Let's go to the next slide. And the first three that items that are programs that are in this goal were suggested or directed by the legislature. And the first is that we would like to have continuous enrollment of children up to age six, which means that once a child is found eligible, we would not continue to check income. But we would look at all other criteria for eligibility. And this, of course, just ends churn and some of the gaps in coverage that get in the way of well-child health. The second one is the reentry coverage and services after incarceration. And what we are finding out is that we don't have a strong transition when people are Medicaid eligible and leaving prison or jail and coming back into the community. And in fact, we're losing people. And so what we want to do is start the process 30 days before release and have a smooth transition to ensure that people are covered and they receive the care that is so critical on day one. The second one, or the third, excuse me, is about expanding health coverage for people's pregnancy and or what we call postpartum coverage. And right now, we've extended that from two months to 12 months because of some federal legislation connected with the pandemic, and we'd like to keep that going. But also, we want to add a couple of policy eligibility tweaks that so that there's coverage regardless of citizenship status and regardless of whether somebody was enrolled in Medicaid during the pregnancy. The fourth item under this particular goal has to do with supports for people in substance use as well as mental health. And during the current waiver, we received federal money to help with inpatient care for mental health and substance use treatment. We simply want to keep that going into the waiver and continue to demonstrate that that's the smart policy and program to continue as we go forward. On the next slide, if I could, there's a thing to go to, and just before I introduce B. Actually, if we, there we go. B, let's have you start in on goal two, advancing whole-person, primary, prevented, and home and community-based care.
Great, thank you so much, Michael. Again, my name is B Rector, and I'm the Interim Assistant Secretary with Aging and Long-Term Support Administrations with the Department of Social and Health Services. And I'm really happy to be here with the Healthcare Authority, the single Medicaid state agency, to talk about the renewal waiver. So under the existing 1115 waiver, Aging and Long-Term Support Administration has been partnering with the state's 13-area agency on aging to offer two types of services. One is services to unpaid family caregivers, who are really the backbone of the state and nation, actually, system of long-term services and supports. And the other is to be able to offer long-term services and supports to individuals that are at risk of Medicaid, but are not financially eligible for Medicaid. So they meet all of the functional criteria, but they may have resources that are too high to qualify them. And those individuals would be able to either wrap services around an unpaid family caregiver or be able to get a paid caregiver or other kinds of paid services and supports. This has been highly successful. We've served over 13,000 people in the five years of the program. At any given time, we have about 4,500 people a month that are served. And we want to be able to continue these valuable programs. In addition, we're asking or seeking for four additional flexibilities. One would be that we know that there are some individuals in institutional settings. That could be a skilled nursing facility. It could be a cute hospital. It could be a psychiatric hospital where they lack decision-making capacity. And so they're not really able to transition to the community because they don't have someone who can act as a guardian. And so we are asking CMS for support to be able to use some Medicaid dollars through the demonstration waivers to pay for guardianship setups and guardianship services that would allow those individuals to have a decision-maker if they move into the community. One of the things that we have tested out during the current during the current waiver is presumptive eligibility. This is so that we are able to, through a screening of functional and financial criteria, we're able to begin services quickly while we do the full Medicaid determination process. One of the institutional biases in Medicaid is that people who are not eligible for Medicaid can go into a nursing home tomorrow, have their eligibility determined, and backdate their eligibility for up to 90 days. But to access Medicaid-funded, long-term care in the community, you have to first complete a functional assessment and full financial eligibility, which means there's a delay in being able to access services of anywhere from 30 to even 60 days or longer. So we're asking to be able to use the successful presumptive eligibility process that we've developed in the first waiver and extend that out to anyone that is looking for community-based, long-term services and supports under Medicaid. The third flexibility we're looking for is for individuals that live in close proximity to one another. This could be individuals needing long-term care that live in apartment complexes. It could be people who are living in mobile home parks. We would like to be able to put a team of a personal care aide in and have some flexibility around how that team coordinates services for all of the individuals living in that geographic area or that apartment complex or that mobile home park. That will offer more flexibility in terms of real-time kinds of on-demand services. It also will allow individuals to really be mentored in a team of workers, which we think will help with recruitment and retention efforts for the drug care workforce. And the last thing that we are seeking for support from CMS is to be able to provide rental subsidies. We know that lots of people want to be able to relocate from institutional settings into their own home. But they might lack the income to be able to afford market rent. And we know that subsidized housing, there are long wait lists for it. So if we could have some bridge subsidies to be able to help people with rental assistance so that they can move into their own homes while they're waiting for more long-term subsidies, that's the flexibility we're looking for from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. And with that, I will turn it to Chase.
Thanks, B. Let's go to the next slide. One more strategy to address here under goal two is advancing our integration of physical and behavioral health through a standard integration assessment tool. So we have learned a lot over the past several years and made a lot of progress. But we are really moving to a new assessment tool to support providers and clinics to understand where they're at on the continuum of integrated care and to really provide more of a roadmap on how to advance integration. And so our request will be really the technical assistance support for implementing the tool, helping providers understand how to use the tool and administer the assessment. And then also, the, some of the follow-up opportunities. So based on the results of the assessment, opportunities to provide practice coaching, opportunities for targeted incentives to really reward and support advancement on the continuum of integration. And yeah, there's, so we're excited about this body of work. Really does fit into this, this goal two around whole-person care. And the, the new tool is really well-suited for both physical health providers and behavioral health providers. That's one of the reasons this work group that included input from providers. It included managed care organizations, accountable communities of health, and others who have been really involved in this work over the past few years. So they've recommended this, this new tool that we're going to be advancing. Let's go to the next slide. So now I'm going to go into goal number three, and there's quite a bit here. I'll try to be brief. And then you put, you all can ask specific questions at the end so that we cover what you, what you want to spend more time on. Let's go one more slide here. So we really want to focus on addressing health-related social needs. So goal three, you'll hear a lot about health-related services, health-related social needs, health equity. And so really, we're looking at how do we, how do we move even beyond integrated care to think about the connection and integration and coordination with community supports and community resources that are so important to health and well-being, but really exist outside of healthcare. So one of the programs that is, is new is Taking Action for Healthier Communities, also referred to as TALK. And so this will include several of those components I mentioned, health-related services. And we'll describe that in just a minute. Health equity funding, community hubs, a native hub, and related investments in community-based workforce. So we'll describe all of that in more detail. But really, all of this work is going to be dependent on really strong collaboration among accountable communities of health, managed care organizations, tribes, providers, and community-based organizations and other partners. So we're, we're excited about the partnerships that we're able to build upon, including the work of the accountable communities of health. But we know that there's just an increasing need for coordination and collaboration. Let's go to the next slide here. And so in terms of addressing health-related social needs, I think the important starting point here is let's continue to do what, what has worked well under the current waiver, the current Medicaid Transformation Project. And so I wanted to cover foundational community supports, which is a really critical program that will continue. And it provides supportive housing and supported employment services. It does not pay for housing wages or wage enhancements. There are a couple of things that so has been super successful, and we will continue, but also looking to, to enhance the program. So two ways that we are seeking waiver authority to enhance the program is through one-time transition costs such as application fees, basic home goods, first and last month's rent. And so that would be a really, really important add-on to the program. The other one, policy change is regarding eligibility criteria. So this would expand eligibility to individuals exiting a correctional facility and for people who are age 16 or older. And let's go to the next slide here. So in, in terms of the health-related services, sometimes we'll refer to that as HRS when you're in the application and looking at the language there. But, but really, we're leveraging a managed care authority called in lieu of services. And this allows managed care organizations to pay for services that are really appropriate, but they're not currently covered benefits. And so they have to be medically appropriate alternatives. They have to be cost-effective. For example, removing carpet in the home of someone with asthma. So you know, you have to deal with some of the underlying issues and conditions or else, you know, we may never see the health improvements based strictly on healthcare and the covered benefits. So that's a great example of what we're talking about here. There, they are in existence today. These services don't necessarily require waiver authority. But why we're including them is because there could be a couple of services we've, we've asked for that CMS says you can't pay for those under the in lieu of service authority, but you could pay for those under the waiver authority. We've seen that with other states. California, for example, has a list of in lieu of services that were approved, and then a couple of services that were required to go into the waiver in order to be paid for. It also is really connected to our partnership that I talked about between accountable communities of health and managed care organizations. Very connected to our focus on health equity. And also, we think there's a really strong correlation to the community hub and the community-based workforce, which I'll talk about in a minute. And I think you'll see how it really fits within the overall context, even though this is a managed care authority that, that really sits outside of the waiver. Yeah, and overall, we really see this as a way to make the process easier for managed care organizations to pay for these in lieu of services. So coming up with a standard list and a standard approval process and standard guidance can really streamline the process to, to make these services available. Let's go to the next slide. The health equity program, so in addition to those services, so health-related services that we just talked about, they're really individual level. So it's about individuals receiving the supports that they need beyond healthcare. But we also know that there are some supports needed related to community infrastructure, organizational supports that are really not individual services, but they're, they're broader needs and their, their infrastructure needs and capacity building needs. And, and this is a, an opportunity that we're asking for waiver funding to partner with accountable communities of health, to partner with community voices and community input and community organizations to make investments in some of these community-wide initiatives and needs. There's a lot of additional detail that needs to be developed. And so we're collecting your feedback through this process, and we'll continue to have conversations with partners and accountable communities of health. But really excited about this opportunity. This is not our only strategy that relates to health equity. But it's just one more really, really important way to provide funding in some of these investments that sometimes go unaddressed and, and, you know, recognized, but, but without a funding source to, to address them. And so by having these investments, we think it's going to really enable some of the other work, the health-related services. You know, maybe there are capacity building needs that will be necessary for us to be able to provide new services. And also related to our, our community-based care coordination work that we'll talk about here. So let's go to the next slide. Yeah, so this is our community-based care coordination work. We, we refer to it as community hub. But really, this is about connecting organizations and individuals to community supports and community resources, helping, helping with the identification of needs. And then helping with the, the navigation and the referral. And so we, in terms of structure, we're envisioning that each ACH will oversee a regional community hub. And then there will be a statewide native hub that would really be focused on support for tribal members, coordinating with Indian healthcare providers and other community organizations. So in, in all, we expect there to be the nine regional hubs and then the one native hub. So hubs support the community-based care coordination that I just mentioned, and really, the, the delivery of health-related services. This is where we think that it's really connected to that focus on the in lieu of services and, and health-related services. Because we're going to increase, the goal is to really increase identification of these needs, you know, that, that are sometimes unaddressed. And then having both the coordination mechanism to get individuals connected to the available resources and services. But also, what we're trying to do through the health-related services is actually pay for those. So the two go hand in hand. And so this is not replicating clinical care coordination. We're far more focused through this effort on the community care coordination. We know healthcare exists in the community, but what we mean by that is really the social determinants of health, the social supports, the, the health-related needs. Programs like foundational community supports, but also other needs that, that exist beyond housing and employment. So we're going to identify those needs and then try to address those needs through connection to community-based organizations and referral between different organizations. Then, yeah, there's going to be a, a need here to focus on community-based workforce and payment strategies for community-based workforce. We don't say community health workers. We're just thinking a little bit more broad than that. We're thinking of community health workers, peer supports, navigators, so trying to keep our language fairly broad. Let's go to the next slide. I've already talked about a few of these, so I want to be really brief. Really, this is about let's identify the needs. Let's identify the social support needs, some of the unaddressed needs that are really essential to achieving health and well-being. And let's have a mechanism, really, a, a network of community organizations so we know what sorts, what services are available, what resources are available at the community. And then the connection, the, the ability to refer individuals to these organizations and for these organizations to be able to refer between one another and can communicate between one another. So individuals' needs are identified. Individuals are getting connected to the resources they need. Organizations are understanding what's happening with, with the individuals that they're referring to different supports and different resources. And there's a, there is that follow-up and that tracking to really understand that services are being provided and what, what we're achieving. Go to the next one here. So community-based workforce, this is related, but, but separate from what I just talked about. So this is a legislatively-directed pilot project to support community-based workforce, community health workers within pediatric primary care. So there's $2 million in pilot funding available. And what we're seeking to do, because this is a pilot, it fits really, really well within our goal here, goal number three, and the work around health-related services and community-based care coordination. So by including it in the waiver, we can hopefully receive federal matching funding to supplement what the state authorized, what the legislature authorized. And then also, it, it fits into our, our evaluation of community-based care coordination. And we'll, we'll be able to learn from the community hub work, from the health-related services work, and from this, this pilot program. And they all really are pretty cohesive in terms of an evaluation and learning. So before we go to more discussion and really focus on your questions and leave as much time as we can, we just wanted to quickly recap, and then Rochelle has to recap a couple of things around timeline and next steps. But we're almost to, to the discussion time. So first, just to show what's continuing, we have the Substance Use Disorder, IMD, and the Mental Health IMD programs that are in place today, continuing, they're not changing. We are expanding long-term services and supports. B spoke to some of the new policies and flexibilities to really reinforce the services provided through that program. And then the foundational community supports, we talked about the enhancements we're looking to provide there, including the eligibility criteria expanding. And then what we have beginning is what I just covered around the Taking Action for Healthier Communities program, which includes the community hubs, the health-related services, the health equity investments, and the focus on payment for community-based workforce. And then we have the Continuous Medicaid Enrollment for Children that Michael covered. Michael also covered the postpartum coverage extension and the reentry coverage after incarceration. So those are all, those last four there are all beginning. So in some ways, build upon some of the work we've done under the current renewal. But these are truly new initiatives that we're really excited about. Uh, truly, uh, new initiatives that we're really excited about. And with that, I think I'm handing it over to Rochelle.
All right. Thank you, Chase. Let's go to the next slide, please. Oh, Chase, it looks like you've got one more about the reminders.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one more. Uh, yeah, so just a couple of caveats that. Of course, as Michelle said at the start, this is part of our formal process. We're collecting input. Um, we will have a chance to revise our materials before we submit the application to CMS this summer. Um, and just to caveat that all of this that we've talked about is subject to those conversations with, with CMS and reaching agreement. On the, uh, the waiver activities. And I know there's a related question around getting approval and what does that, you know, what are some of the risks? We'll address that here in a minute. Um, and it relates to this point. And then we will need time. So some of these programs won't start. Um, the day that we have the waiver approved, some of them will, they'll, they'll continue, um, especially those that are currently in place today would continue without, um, any gap. Uh, but some of the new programs specifically will take time. Um, so obviously we'll implement as quickly as we can. Um, but some of the programs might require, um, additional detail and work with CMS. Um, and then others just simply will take time, even if we have full agreement with CMS, we still, we still know that there's work to do. Um, to, to implement some of these new strategies. Such as the, uh, the health related services. So we, we may get approval on a. A, a number of health related services, but we may have to still phase in implementation of those, just as an example. Okay, go ahead Rochelle, thanks.
Thanks, Chase. All right, next slide, please. All right, so I'll run you all through, um, some key dates that we have within the renewal. So last year we spent some considerable time developing our concepts and engaged with some key partners. Uh, early this year, uh, and, you know, continuing to partner, uh, work with our tribal nations and community engagement. And continue to refine those concepts. And right now, uh, today we're, uh, pretty close to being right in the middle of our, our formal public comment period. Uh, we have a tribal consultation as well, uh, and. You know, the, through now and through the summer, the comments that we receive, uh, will be used to refine and to further develop our application, which we will be submitting. To CMS and that stands for Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So that's where we are between now and now in summertime. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so now, uh, we would love to hear from you. I know we've got a couple of questions already in the, in the queue. And again, you're welcome to raise your hand and you can verbally share, you can put your questions in the chat. And we've got a team of subject matter experts, including our presenters from today. Uh, behind the scenes figuring out who would be best to answer the questions and comments that come through. Uh, but again, I just want to, um, express our appreciation and our gratitude for all of you showing up and spending your lunch hour with us. And, um, uh, really helping us think through some of these concepts and asking your questions. Uh, so when you're sharing your feedback, you know, just to give you a good point to jump off of a few, if you, if you're looking for, you know, sometimes it's a little bit overwhelming, you know. Give us your feedback after we've given you a lot of information. Um, you know, when you hear about this renewal package, uh, what excites you? Uh, is there anything that is concerning to you? Is there anything that you would want, uh, to make sure that we know? You know, what's working well now that should be preserved in the renewal? Or is there any other feedback or comments that you have for us? Um, so give me just a moment here. I'm going to sift through some questions that we have. So I know that we had a, a first question from Kevin. And the question is, for context, what are the most significant risk factors for not getting a renewal? Um, Michelle, do you want to take that one?
Sure, I'll start with that. Thank you, Rochelle. Uh, we are fully confident that we will get a renewal of a waiver. But that said, there are a number of proposals in this package that are new. And more complicated and have never been approved yet by CMS. And so those will take longer in negotiation with CMS versus the things that have already been approved and are in place today. We think that some of the, the new areas like continuous enrollment for children, that's a brand new idea. Um, we know one or two other states are also looking at that, but it's never been approved yet. The, um, reentry services for incarcerated population has not yet been approved. Uh, again, there are states in conversations with CMS about that, but not yet been approved. Um, some of the components that be talked about for the presumptive eligibility. Um, very grand, very good idea and creative, um, conversation to have a CMS again, not yet approved. So, um, we'll be looking for some probably extended conversations with CMS about some portions of the waiver. But some of it should be more straightforward and be more timely as Chase talked about, um, for easier implementation and some will be phased in.
All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, next question is from Rhonda and I will read it out for folks. Uh, the question is, many community health centers provide SDOH or Social Determinants of Health Services within their organizations. Like housing, transportation, employment, et cetera. Do you foresee us needing to go through the regional hubs to refer to ourselves? Also, could you describe the relationship between the state CIE and the regional hubs? Thank you. Um, and the CIE stands for Community Information Exchange. Um, Michael, can I pump this to you?
Yeah, Rhonda, we hope that community health centers will continue to, uh. Provide housing, transportation, employment, all the other social terms of health services that you're providing today. We envision the regional hubs as being complimentary in every ACH region around the state. To providing those services in a more streamlined fashion, uh, hopefully with fewer. Uh, administrative burdens and working hand in hand with what you're doing today. We do not envision, uh, community health centers or even managed care organizations having to go through the hub. And in fact, we see the hub as being a no wrong door operation. And, and again, it would be complimentary and we think a hub is just necessary for. Providing that predominant level of health related services as well as the high touch for certain populations of emphasis that Chase mentioned. Uh, for more care coordination. Uh, we think it will work well with, with the community, um. Uh, providers that are there today. We simply see it as, as, uh, offering a, a better way to do it to meet the gap, uh, that is there right now. And, uh, that in the need for health related services. On, uh, Community Information Exchange, um, as you probably noticed, it's mentioned in the draft application that's posted. Um, but it's not mentioned a lot because what we're hoping to do is fund community information exchange through a different process. So the legislature has asked us, um, the healthcare authority to. A review, uh, where community information exchange exists in the state today and to provide recommendations on how to proceed. So the relationship we'd like to see between community information exchange and the regional hubs is that. The hubs can put together the services, uh, that, uh, can build in the, uh, community support workers that Chase talked about along with. Uh, people who can really understand the priorities and the needs of the community. We would like to again, fund the CIE through a separate mechanism. And see that it provides that information technology or health information technology undergirding. Uh, that we believe that hubs will need, uh, to be successful at a regional level. Let me send it back to you, Rochelle.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the next question and we really truly appreciate all of these thoughtful questions. This is just great. Okay, so I do believe that we have someone with their hand up. Uh, so let's go to, I believe it's Dr. Nari. Um, and Sagan and Gabby, I'm sure that you are letting them know to unmute themselves.
Hello, thanks a lot. I just wanted to make a comment regarding the, um, twelve month postpartum coverage. Um, I, I've read through it. I really support what you guys have in there. You guys have a lot of really good points. You know, when you take a look at the United States, we've got one of the, I think we're the only industrialized nation that's having worsening outcomes from maternal mortality. That certainly didn't get any better during the pandemic. And I can tell you right now, when we take a look at this, the, the patients that are of most at risk of this seem to be, uh, most disadvantaged people. Losing that coverage in that postpartum period, um, would be terrible. About a third of our deaths of paternal in that period of time period is in that postpartum time period. And we've started to notice some significant improvement in outcomes that we actually think will also provide cost savings with that coverage. Um, so highly supported and I love the point you guys have in there.
Thank you very much. I just want to put the comment back to the, to the team that's with us today. Is there anyone who would like to respond or has any comments to what Dr. Nari just shared with us?
Rochelle, I'm just going to say thank you for the comments and, uh, it's a, it's a legislative directive, so we're, we're very happy to be pursuing it.
Thank you very much. All right, so we've got a few more questions that have been coming in. Uh, the next question is from Will and the question is, uh, can you talk about where medical respite is found in the waiver? And if it will be a Medicaid benefit? Uh, Chase, would you be able to answer that one?
Yeah, thanks Rochelle. Yeah, it's, medical respite is included as a health related service. So it's, uh, it's not addressed as a, an independent program, but it's found. In the health related services appendix, uh, in the application. As one of, one of the services defined there. Uh, we do know that California pursued the same strategy and CMS. Um, approved the service, but not as an in lieu of service. So I mentioned that scenario where we might have some services that are approved as a waiver funded service rather than, um, under the in lieu of service authority. And we expect medical respite is, is likely, uh, one of those services.
All right, thank you, Chase. Okay, um, let's take a look here. Give me just a moment here. I'm, I've got one screen and I'm, I've got a number of windows open here. Um, but again, we really, really do appreciate the questions. All right, I'm going to jump, uh, to a question a little bit further down, so bear with me here. We're still coordinating with all of our subject matter experts and, and figuring out all of that. Let's go to, there was a question on. Our tribal partners. Let me see if I can find it here. Clearly I think I need to redo my glasses here. Um, give me just a moment. I'm going to put you, I'm going to put myself on mute. Hang on just one moment. Thank you, everybody. All right, we are back. Okay, so one of the questions that we received was. How do we address tribes working or contracting directly with HCA state for all funds to be received? For Medicaid transformation and not be forced to work with regional organizations such as CPAA or other ACHs or other community organizations. Um, Lena, would you be able to, to speak to some of that?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lena Nashand. I am the tribal liaison for Medicaid Transformation here at the office, or here at the Healthcare Authority. Um, part of the reason we are interested in pursuing the concept of a statewide native hub. Is exactly what Deb's question is addressing around, uh, funds not flowing through regional entities. Uh, we recognize there is still that question and we're going to work in partnership with our tribes to address it around. How to maintain a government to government rate relationship with our tribes, uh, in doing this work and recognizing. Could there be any benefit in a statewide native hub? So we're working on that. Uh, we are going to be discussing the statewide native hub at the Governor's Indian Health Advisory Council, which is happening on June 9th. Uh, and anyone is welcome to attend and I think that's it, unless Deb has any follow up questions.
Thank you very much, Lena. Appreciate that. All right, so we have received a question a little bit earlier about, see if I can find it. Um, one question we received, would it help to let our senators and house representatives to support the extension? Um, Michelle, do you want to take that one?
Sure, thank you Rochelle. Um, yes, it would be great for senators and representatives to support the waiver and, um, send comments and supportive letters if they have them. Um, we do have a briefing scheduled with legislators in the next week or so, so we'll also offer them an opportunity to ask direct questions and engage with us.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, next question is, does the waiver or MTP govern the kidney disease program in any way? Uh, Michael, do you want to take that one?
I'd be glad to Rochelle Michael on as Deputy Policy Director and, uh. We should say that the, the renewal is, is a pretty high level document that seeks programs and policies that. We simply do not have authority to, um, operate today. Uh, so it's, so sometimes the, there are programs that are ongoing that we already have authority to work on. And I, and I want to reinforce that renewal that we're talking about is only one project that we have going on within the healthcare authority. And it's to mainly address when we don't have, um, the appropriate authority or, or avenue to, to address a problem. Uh, then we can ask for that authority through the Medicaid program, but we do have other dental programs. And authority today that, that we can, um, that are ongoing, uh, that can be used to, to pursue those particular issues. Let me see, uh, Chase, uh, would you, anything that you would add to that?
Yeah, I think, no, I think that was great, Michael. And so I think it does apply to, uh, a question we received. Uh, so I think two questions we received, one around the dental sealant program and one around the, um, kidney disease, uh, program. And so I think there are many other programs. I think the only thing I would add to is the, anything that was, that was part of the district program. Um, so that we currently operate a delivery system reform incentive payment program. It's known as DISTRIP. And it is very broad and it allowed, it allowed us to, uh, test many different, um, services and programs and payment, um, strategies. And that program is transitioning and so we do expect that our accountable communities of health are working with, uh, partners that are involved in some of those programs. And so I think both of those, um, likely fit, at least in certain communities, um, under the district program. Uh, so we are not continuing the full breadth of the district program. Uh, we have, you know, put forward some new strategies and some continuing strategies. Um, but just to note that there will be some, some programs under DISTRIP that might need to be transitions. Uh, and we would appreciate feedback regarding those transitions and how we can support, um, looking at some of those other vehicles as Michael mentioned. Uh, so we do welcome that feedback, even if it doesn't result in a program being embedded within the waiver.
Thank you very much, Chase, and thank you, Michael. Um, a question that we received on the FCS program, and again, that's the foundational community supports program. Um, the FCS program could include transitional housing costs for several months, and this is a huge gap in our current housing continuum. California already had their 1115 waiver approved for six months of housing costs, including rental vouchers. And Arizona has a proposal in currently to cover up to 18 months. I see that there is proposal for ALTA to have this benefit, but why not the general Medicaid population? Um, we've got a number of, of, um, experts with us today. Um, Matt Christie, is this something that you might want to, to start off with? This could be a, a multiple answer for multiple people. But do you want to start us off?
Sure, and I think it is one of those multiple answers for multiple people since we have different, um, target populations for the different. Benefits under the waiver as well as just different funding mechanisms than you see in other states. Um, for foundational community support specifically, um, we've identified a large gap in people who have experienced, um, homelessness. And who are exiting, whether it's behavioral health, inpatient treatment or different institutional settings. Um, and returning to homelessness and I've identified. An area where we hope to receive additional funding to support kind of in a one-time transition mechanism, uh, those individuals. Um, but also just out of this past legislative session, um, a- again, it's tied to the waiver, but not something that we're seeking authority for. Um, but that came out of this past legislative session was House Bill 1866 or the Apple Health and Homes Act. Uh, that does provide, um, for people who are eligible for FCS supportive housing. Um, a, uh, 12-month housing benefit. Um, so physical tangible housing that would be tied with FCS, uh, supportive housing services. Um, and I think broader than FCS, I would probably need to pass it over to B. Rector to answer the ALTA piece. Um, but it does seem, you know, compared to these other states that we're looking at, um. They do have different, uh, sort of target populations and different funding mechanisms. And I probably am not the best person to speak to being able to target, uh, the general. the general Medicaid population with some sort of housing benefit. Hopefully, that helps answer some of the least foundational community supports-related part of that question.
Thank you very much, Matt. B, is there anything that you would like to add on the ALTA side of things?
The only thing I would add is that, under an 1115 waiver, we have to meet budget neutrality. And so I think that's one of the challenges that we have. There's lots of innovations that I think we would like to achieve and seek. But there's a limited pot of money that we can use and still meet kind of the budget neutrality requirements of the 1115. On the ALTA side, we were really asking for flexibility specific to populations that are in institutions. And we're trying to make the cost-effective argument with CMS and also the the equity argument with CMS, that they pay room and board and skilled nursing facilities, as an example, but don't allow Medicaid to be used for room and board in the community. And we're able to prove cost-effectiveness when somebody's moving from an institution and the cost of their rent, plus the cost of long-term services and supports would still be cheaper than what the state and Medicaid are paying while the person is in the institution. It's a little bit harder to get the firm numbers around that for a homelessness population. And as Chase said, the legislature put some money in around homelessness for populations. And so we're wanting to start with an argument that we think is a pretty solid argument and prove, and then we could expand from there. So that's kind of our thought process related to where we're going with rental subsidies right now in the proposal.
Thank you very much, B, and thank you, Matt, for your answers on those. All right, so we've got a comment, and I'll read it out here from Deb. My understanding is that the native hub's purpose would be to connect individuals and providers. Based on the last five trying years, being forced to work with an original organization to receive a portion of the MT or Medicaid transformation funds does not work. We can share numerous examples of the failures and challenges there. Lena, do you want to jump in there on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Deb. The one thing I would say is that we have been aware of some of the challenges that have existed with the regional accountable communities of health and some of the tribes and Indian healthcare providers. And we definitely are trying to change our direction with this next round. I will say, the concepts of the native hub are still being developed and worked on, so we hope that you continue to engage and work with us on this process. We are in no way, I would say, finalized on what the native hub is gonna look like. And we are, part of the reason for a native hub is to avoid some of the mistakes of the past. So learning from what we've done and what has and hasn't worked. So that is the attempt to get a hub.
Thank you very much, Lena. All right, so we still have some time for some Q and A, but it looks like we've got a little bit of a lull in the comments and questions for now. Can I ask to go to the next slide? And we'll go through the last couple little pieces here, and if there's questions, we'll do our best to answer them before 1 o'clock. So besides the public hearing today, we do have a number of other alternatives for you to provide public comment. You can email us directly at medicaetransformation@hca.wad.gov. You can fill out an online survey, and it just has open text options for you to share whatever is on your mind, specific to the renewal. And you can also snail mail us as well. And so here's our full address there. Next slide, please. All right, so we've got some resources, and on our Medicaid Transformation Project, our MTP renewal webpage, we have the full draft application. It's a big document. It's, I think, around 350-ish pages. And so we also have some appendices that accompany that draft application. We have an acronym glossary. We do do our best to try to talk in plain language, but we've got so much work going on, and oftentimes that work has an acronym or an initialism attached to it. And that can, you know, that can be very confusing for folks trying to understand what it is that we're doing. So we put together an acronym glossary for folks to better navigate that draft document. And we also have some publications that are more high-level and simplified, even though, you know, all the programs and things that we've been discussing are very complex topics. We've got About the MTP Renewal. We have a snapshot renewal, which is a two-pager. That's kind of a condensed version of the About the MTP renewal document, and both of those are in multiple languages. We also have an Evolution of Initiative 1. And that's, you know, under the renewal, it's gonna be called the Taking Action for Healthier Communities, also called TAC. So you can read a little bit more about our accountable communities of health and other partners are going to be focused on in the renewal. And we also have a frequently asked questions or an FAQ. You can also sign up to receive announcements and to receive gov delivery notifications and announcements that go out that are specific to the Medicaid Transformation Project and, you know, the future of health transformation in our state. So I'm seeing that we just got a question in. Give me just a moment, so we can kind of, I can confer with the experts here and figure out who can best answer, and then we will likely call that a day. So Mary, thank you very much for your comment. Hang on for just a moment, and we'll get right with you. All right, and Mary, no worries at all about it being long. It's all good. So Mary's question comment is, I have a concern about the hubs. Will CBHAs be able to continue to contract directly with managed care organizations? Some meetings held in communities have left us feeling that an entity administering a hub will have full control over all behavioral health referrals, that all referrals must go through an entity acting as a hub. This has been described as either an ACH, an accountable community of health, a healthcare corporation, or a county. From the hub, we are told, CBHAs will receive referrals, and MCOs, managed care organizations, would work primarily with hubs. All of that is concerning. As described in the waiver, the hub sounds very different, much more about helping those who have social determinant needs or do not know where to turn. Is that correct? It would not disrupt CBHAs' relationship with MCOs. Additional significant changes in our state's behavioral health Medicaid system would be rough. Chase, do you want to get that one started? And like some of the other questions, we may need to kind of toggle between a couple of different folks to answer the question. But do you want to get us started?
Yeah, I will start and see if Michael or others want to add anything. So thanks, Mary. And I think the short response would be, I think you are tracking. I think you're right that it would not disrupt the relationship with the MCOs, and that what we presented today sounds a little bit different than what you maybe have heard in community meetings. So I think that's the short, kind of the short response. I think what we really envision is that the community hub is a resource, and it's really for those relationships that don't exist and those referral patterns that don't exist. So not a gatekeeper of any form, but really a resource where it's needed. And I think we have more to work out, obviously, including, you know, as we offer new services and we try to get new programs, I should say, new community-based organizations involved in providing health-related services that receive Medicaid payment. I think there is a question around how do we effectively use the community hub? So just to say, there's probably more to work out. We actually are gonna start conversations with accountable communities of health and managed care organizations about some of those details. But I would just say in general, I think not disruptive, really supposed to be a reinforcement where it helps and to address some of the gaps that exist. And then probably some opportunities where the hub can actually be really instrumental for the health-related services, new organizations getting involved, new services being provided and paid for. Michael, do you have anything to add there?
I really don't, Chase. So thank you for the question, Chase. Thanks for the response.
All right, very good. That puts us right at 1 o'clock. So let's go to the last slide. And want to thank all of you for spending some time with us and for your thoughtful questions. Please reach out. If you have any other questions or comments, we really, really want to hear from you. I appreciate you all. Have a wonderful day. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.